Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Today's date is Wednesday, July 17th, 2019, at 5:15 PM. Brokko, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Here.
Chair Akchian.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Minasian.
Here.
And Shabaz.
Okay. Can we have a report regarding posting of agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, July 10th, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Can everybody stand and join Commissioner Astorian for pleasure values?
Please follow me in the pledge to our flag and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you. Item number four, can we get approval of minutes for June 5th, 2019, regular meeting?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. So moved. Moving on to the oral communication, I do not see any, so let's move on to zoning appeals, and that, I do not see any. So we'll move on to new business. There's none. Planning Commission items, all business. Number one, 715 North Central Avenue. The applicant has withdrawn that case, so we'll go on to the new business, which is a Glendale Municipal Code amendment. Location citywide, and the staff is Chris Kristinas Esp and Chris Bagdekian. So yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners. This is a code amendment that got initiated by council recently, and then Planning and City Attorney's staff has worked together to package this amendment and bring it before the Planning Commission for review and their recommendation to council. This amendment is specifically amendments to Titles 4, 5, and Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code and general plan amendment to amend the downtown specific plan. The purpose of this amendment is to allow and regulate home sharing, which is a subset of short-term rentals, and also to prohibit vacation rentals. Since the slides aren't working, we handed out hard copies of the slides for consideration so that we can follow, all of us. The background on this, the zoning code does not directly address short-term rentals as a specific land use category. Back in 2016, the City Council considered and discussed short-term rentals and directed staff to return with further investigation and information back to the City Council. Towards the end of 2018, staff returned to the City Council with the updates on the subject matter, and at that meeting, the City Council initiated the code amendments. Let me remind, let me clarify that the Planning Commission's purview is limited to the amendments to Title 30 and the general plan amendment to the downtown specific plan. The balance of it, amendments to Titles 4 and 5 are included for context, and so that the entire picture can be seen by the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission's recommendation tonight will be limited to the amendments to Title 30 and the general plan amendment to the downtown specific plan. The first slide on page two is regarding the background, and this is what specifically the council directed staff to achieve in this amendment. It's to ban vacation rental citywide, allow home sharing, and then I'll go over these in a moment, and to enact licensing and registration requirements, implement requirements for the payment and collection of TOT, which is the transit occupancy tax, similar to hotels, and to enact appropriate remedies and penalties in the event of violations. The following slide. We are going to go into the amendments to Title 30 and the general plan amendment to the DSP. The first part of this is to allow home sharing as an accessory use in all zones where residential uses are permitted or exist. The accessory use for home sharing is defined as providing temporary lodging for compensation for periods of 30 days or less, where at least one host lives on the site throughout the guest's stay at the property. On the next slide, we are differentiating this from vacation rentals, which staff is directed to prohibit. Vacation rentals is similar to home sharing, but the main difference is there is no host staying on the property while the guest is staying on the property. The third, the next item on this slide is amendments to the non-conforming section or the chapter of the zoning code, and it's to allow for an amortization period for existing businesses or activities that are ongoing. And this amortization period is for a period of six months from the date of anticipated adoption of the ordinance, if it moves forward. Moving on, the next slide is amendments, amendments to Titles 4 and 5. Amendments to Title 4 is specifically to broaden the definition of hotel, in this case to include the home sharing activity, and the purpose of this is to regulate home sharing activity as a hotel for the purpose of collecting the transit occupancy tax. And the next section in this amendment to Title 4 is Section 4.32.060, and this requires that home sharing activities register with the city, similar to hotels, and the intent is again, the collection of TOT. The following slide. This continues the amendments to Titles 5. Now, the main thing in Title 5 here is to add Chapter 5.110, and this contains the majority of the operational requirements, definitions, and so on, related to home sharing. So this new chapter defines home sharing and vacation rentals. It requires home sharing to obtain a license, and also outlines the process to obtain a license or renew a license. It also outlines the requirements for to run a home sharing operation, and it also includes, in the last part of it, enforcement action. Having covered all this, staff's recommendation, and I remind again the Planning Commission and the public, that the Planning Commission's purview is to make a recommendation on the amendments to Title 30 and the general plan amendment to the DSP. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend approval or adoption of these ordinances to the City Council. If this moves forward, what we are anticipating to do is, before this goes to the City Council level, we are anticipating tweaking with the provisions in Title 4 and 5 to refine the provisions in there and to clarify certain points in it while this pending the council review. Tentatively, this is scheduled to be a council hearing on September 10. This can change, but for now, this is the anticipated date of the hearing. I'd like to conclude my presentation, unless there are questions from the Planning Commissioners.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bagdekian. Any questions to the staff?
I do. In your page two, the second slide, an accessory use of dwelling for the purpose of providing temporary lodging, this is the STR we are talking about, right?
Short-term rentals is the general term that is being used for this kind of activity. The home sharing is one particular kind of short-term rental. Home sharing is what council directed us to allow, and home sharing is for a short-term occupancy for 30 days or less, where the host is present on the property.
Okay. So it could be a room in a house that you've rented out to somebody that is visiting Glendale and likes Americana, wants to go to Americana every day.
Right.
Right?
Or it could be multiple rooms, or a portion, or a den, or something in a residential unit.
But in order for these folks to be able to utilize this service and make a little bit of money from the rental, they have to be registered with the city of Glendale.
Yes.
Do we have an idea what the cost of that registration is?
We're going to work on that. It will be similar to any business license, not a business license to run a commercial business, but a license like a home business, or what's the term I'm looking for, home occupation permit. But it would be a license, it should be treated as a license.
But do we have a range that perhaps can be shared with the Planning Commission? Of what that license fee could range from what to what?
Members of the Planning Commission and Chair Lee, we anticipate that, just from off the top of my head, licenses range from the mid 100s to 200, maybe 300, certainly under 500, I can almost guarantee that, but that's kind of the range, and I hesitate to commit to a figure, but that's kind of the range where they would fall. They wouldn't be significantly expensive.
Mr. Bagdekian, do we have an idea of the number of home sharing practices or endeavors that are going on in the city of Glendale today? Do we have a range?
We don't have, we have a general idea of the short-term rentals that are advertised on one website, Airbnb, because, and, but this is only as of 2016, because at that time, we had a company, and they did it complimentary for us, they, we had a company survey it for us, and they said in the mid 400s, so about 450 is the number I recall back in 2016. Just as an educated guess, I think that's probably gone up since then, but that included vacation rentals, which is where the host is not present, as well as home sharing. So it would be difficult to speculate how many of those are hosted versus unhosted stays.
And is, explain to me the regiment that you will use, the city will use in order to enforce a TOT collection on a home sharing business. How would you go about that?
Well, there are kind of two basic ways you could look at enforcement. One would be to sit back and let people, it'd be complaint-driven, so if people call up and say, "My neighbor is conducting short-term rental activity," I believe it's, they don't have, either they don't have a home sharing license, or they're doing vacation rentals, which are not allowed. We would have to then go out and, like any other enforcement action, Neighborhood Services would have to build a case, and then we could cite them under Minister of Citations, we could cite them with a misdemeanor violation, or we could just give them a letter, notice of violation, and eventually refer it to the City Attorney's Office for prosecution. The other way we could do enforcement is to take a more proactive approach, which would be to actually have someone dedicated on staff that is sort of scouring the websites, and it's not just Airbnb, there are several websites that have these, listed, HomeAway is one of the other big ones, and have that person sort of scour the websites and come up with addresses. The problem with these websites, these hosting platforms, is they don't list the address, so oftentimes, it will have to be just by visual recognition, and that's where the problem comes in. Also, the fact that, I know code enforcement is a bit short on inspectors, it might require hiring an inspector or two, or someone on the administrative end of it, and then another possibility would be to hire a company that could do all this for us. There are companies that have sprung up consultants, if you will, that will assist us in enforcing our ordinance. So these are all possibilities that we'll have to seek direction from the council on.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I don't want to overexhaust, belabor the point, but my question was not about the registration. My question was, if the intention is to be able to collect TOT taxes.
Oh, I apologize. Yes.
How are you going to connect to that point? I don't see the nexus, and I'll tell you why. Today, business files sales reports and pays sales taxes, so we know pretty much how much that business makes. How are you going to ascertain that a home sharing endeavor made $5,000 or didn't make anything?
So when, in talking to the finance department, they kind of explained that it's like that for hotels as well, except that we know, if you're the Embassy Suites, you know, that generally, you're going to make XYZ amount of money, and so, and we have the ability to audit, you know, big hotels, and we could even audit small home sharing activity, whether that would be cost-effective or not is another story. But it certainly is an issue, and we would have to just definitely do what we do with hotels, is take their word for it, because they send in their documentation, we have to rely on the reliability of their documentation, and also, it's a matter of even identifying them in the first place, so if they never got a registration, they might be operating without a license and then not paying TOTS. But something I also want to mention is that there are cities that have entered into agreements with Airbnb to collect transit occupancy taxes for them at the beginning, and that is a possibility, and council has asked staff to do that, but we can't do that until we have an ordinance in place.
Sure. That's the answer I was looking for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Astorian, you have any comments? How about Commissioner Minasian?
Yes. Just for my information, the, this part on page three, there's the amendments to Title 4 and 5, Section 4.32060, it says relates to the registration of hotels and similar uses for collection of TOT. So these regular homes, they need to go through the process of, like same as hotels, to register, so it's the same paperwork, or whatever that's the requirement for the hotels.
Just with respect to the TOT, and it's a very, it's a very short, one-page certificate, so it's not very burdensome for them to do that.
And the other thing, I've reviewed all this documents that is sent. I think the city of Pasadena's proposal was very good, as far as the Airbnb and the other websites to get their cooperation to collect the TOT and all that.
Yes.
So it's something maybe we want to look into.
Yes, we have talked to the city of Pasadena, City Attorney's Office, who negotiated the agreement. We have a copy of their agreement, they shared it, they asked us not to disseminate it, but we do have a copy of it, and they, they are the ones that informed us that Airbnb will entertain that, entertain the possibility of an agreement, but we would have to pass our ordinance first, because that's what they informed Pasadena.
Yeah, yeah, I remember. Okay. Thank you.
I do have a follow-up question on that. I don't know if there's some of the cities that, who have banned this short-term rental, and is there any litigation that between Airbnb, that's what we're familiar with, you know, with the, with those cities? And if there was, what was the result, and any, you know, remedies that came out of that?
Yes, so actually, that was the whole reason council wanted us to come back after we went there in 2016, is because there were several pending lawsuits that didn't have a resolution at the time, and one was, I'll start with the California cities first, San Francisco, Santa Monica, and I believe those are the two major ones. San Francisco ended up settling, they did prevail at the district court level, but the whole lawsuit was based on the fact that San Francisco, and also Santa Monica, put obligations on Airbnb and HomeAway and other hosting platforms to verify that the listing was legal before they published it. So instead of, in addition to penalizing and making a violation for the host to do something that was against the ordinance, they also made it a violation for Airbnb and other hosting platforms to publish without verifying that those people had city licenses. So they sued San Francisco, as well as Santa Monica on those grounds, they did not prevail in the district court, San Francisco ended up settling so that there was no appeal, but Santa Monica did not, and they recently, in March, got a favorable decision from the Ninth Circuit in the city's favor, and Airbnb and HomeAway have since appealed that decision for a rehearing by the Ninth Circuit en banc. That means the entire Ninth Circuit will review it. So that is sort of their last option, unless the Supreme Court of the United States hears it, which is unlikely. So we're pretty confident to be able to tell the council if, at some point, they would like to. Right now, the ordinance we have does not impose any requirements on Airbnb, so I don't think we're in danger of incurring any, or being sued by Airbnb. However, if council later would like to put obligations upon hosting platforms, we think that the legal landscape is pretty clear at this point, that it would be permissible to do that.
Thank you. I wanted to get the history behind some of the legal ramifications here. Any other comments or questions? I do not see any public comments here, so I guess we're going to close the public hearing.
Do we?
Is there?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Do we want to ask? Do one of them want to speak about this?
Do you want to speak on this? You are here.
May I ask a question?
Well, then you have to fill out the card, and then come out, and, yeah.
But that's, that's okay.
Would you like to come up? State your name, and then fill out the card later?
Yes.
Yes. You're welcome to do that.
My name is Blessie Briscoe, and I actually just have one question. And according to what I've read so far, is that a unit has to be hosted.
Excuse me. We have to turn the mic on, for public records.
Okay, sure.
Say.
Could you repeat? Yes.
Your name again?
Yes. My name is Blessie Briscoe, and I actually just have one question, and that is the definition of a hosted unit. What if the unit is a separate building?
Like ADU.
Would that still be considered as a hosted unit?
Well, we'll let Ms. Nukian.
Yes.
Sorry. Well, if, so a hosted unit is both, they would have to prove to us, and we're going to, we're going to clarify this in the ordinance when we take to council, that this is their primary residence, so they'll have to show us a utility bill or some sort of proof that that's their primary residence, and it'll have to be hosted, meaning that they'll have to live on site while the guest is there. I'm not sure what you mean, if it's an ADU that short-term rentals are not allowed, if it's an apartment building that they lease, they can still, with the permission of their landlord, and we would need the landlord to provide a letter saying that they're okay with that. If it's a condominium building, they would need to provide documentation that the homeowners' association approves of it. Other than that, I can't think of other scenarios, but if you have additional questions?
Well, the property has two buildings, and so if I'm in Unit A, let's say, and then I have Unit B, which is a separate structure, would...
It's almost like ADU, isn't it?
No, it's a two-unit apartment.
It's a duplex.
It's a duplex. It's two different structures.
Well, those are two individual units, so you, so there's unit, there's a primary resident for Unit A, and there's a primary resident of Unit B. Primary, if A wanted to home share, A has to also be the resident, has to be on site. B also has a primary resident, you know, Unit B would have to have the primary resident be on site.
Okay. All right. That's what I needed to clarify, because I wasn't quite sure how that would work.
Right, so they're, they're two separate dwelling units, so they have two separate addresses, they're their own independent unit.
Yeah, but owned by the same person that lives in one of the units and wants to lease and/or rent the other one for 30 days at a time. That's one property, it's not considered two.
Right, that would be considered a separate dwelling unit, and he would, he can't be in two places at once, so he would have to pick which one to, to be at, at the time the guest is staying there.
It just doesn't make sense. Now, it doesn't make sense. I own, or the lady owns, a duplex, right? Whether they're attached or detached, it doesn't matter. It's the same property, same owner. She lives in one unit, as opposed to long-term leasing the other one, she's decided to lease it 30 days at a time.
Well, it would not be allowed technically, as we've written, because we could not, I think, anticipate that scenario, but certainly, we could present it as an option to the City Council or pass on the comments, that in the case of, and this is a very specific case, if you can, you know, understand, I'm sure you'd agree, it's a very specific case where you have one owner of a duplex, one of the units, they live on site, live in that, and the other one is vacant. That's a very specific carve-out that they're requesting.
It could be four units, Ms. Nukian, it could be five units, that the owner decides to keep one vacant and do it as short-term rental.
Well, then that's more like a vacation rental in, I mean, I would defer to the planning department, because they're the policy, the driving force for the policy for the zoning code, however, I, in, I would think that that, if it's one unit, that's more justifiable than if there's five units, and now they're running it like a hotel.
And I think that's the exact opposite of the direction staff was given by council on, on how to regulate.
I, I still believe that you need to dig a little bit deeper on this issue, because it would generate some problems as we go forward.
For the clarification purposes, I think this is a good point that was brought up, so I think the staff needs to specifically address that, maybe in your report, recommendation, you know, to the council, that this was brought up during the commission hearing. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comments? You need to fill out a card later on, okay? Thank you. Okay. Please do state your name, and then fill out the card.
5013 Verwood Avenue, I wasn't going to speak, my son's here for a merit badge on attending public hearings, but one issue you might think about is granny flats, if they're a separate building on the same property. That might be something that might be considered a vacation rental, under what I'm hearing. The other thing is, I noticed that there was a stipulation that there be a cap on the number of days per year, and the staff did not mention what they're recommending on the cap. So, just a couple of points.
Just please have your name stated in the microphone.
Yes, Lauren Gubler.
Thank you, Ms. Gubler. Before I close the public hearing, one more question on that six-month amortization period. Was there any magical number to that, or is that something that was part of the, our, you know, exercise in our ordinances, or?
I think staff, when we discussed this, staff felt that six months was plenty of time for people to come in and apply for a license.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And if I may, address the cap on number, on the number of days, we've inserted a provision in Title 5, the cap is 180 days throughout that license period. The license runs for a whole year, so during that year, the cap is 180 days maximum.
Okay. Thank you. So there's no more comments or questions?
Just to respond to the gentleman, that ADUs, if that's what he means by granny, granny flats, cannot, neither the primary resident nor the ADU can participate in a short-term rental, whether it be home sharing or vacation rentals, and that's already in our ADU ordinance, so that was already a policy decision made at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So with that, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain deliberation, recommendation? All right, thank you.
I am very clear on what is being proposed, and we just, I don't want to say living vicariously through the speaker, but we heard what the speaker was stating, and it'll be good to get that point across to the council, because I think... because I think it is important. With that, I can move.
Please do.
So I make a motion.
I think there is a motion here for that, yeah.
That upon consideration of the proposed ordinance, and after reviewing the four categories of applicable SECO exemptions outlined in the Planning Commission's staff report dated July 17, 2019, records files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to this case, number PZC 1911458, and case number PGPA 1911459, to amend Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, 1995, and to amend Downtown Specific Plan DSP related to prohibiting vacation rentals and allowing, but regulating, home sharing. The Planning Commission hereby recommends that the City Council adopt the ordinance with the comments that were just made, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Seeking support? Okay, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Yes.
Chair Abchen.
Yes.
Minasian.
Yes.
Chairperson Protem Lee.
Hi. So with the vote of 4 to 0, the citywide Glendale Municipal Code Amendment has been passed and to recommend to the Council with the comments that was made by Commissioner Astorian. So let's move on to the next item. Item number eight, community development permanent updates.
There are no updates.
No updates. Any comments from Commissioners?
I have a comment to make regarding this today's agenda. I think, I'm not crazy, but the idea of these Airbnb, all that stuff. One of my neighbors has the, runs the Airbnb, and it's just, you see all these random people come, short-term, go. But it's something that's going to stay. This is what it is, and we just have to, our city has to deal with it